Yeah, this is last minute, so thank you for squeezing me in. So we have a member of the community that wants to donate some money to the Parks Department to upgrade our older restroom at Muscatetuck Park. They're wanting to donate the money to the community foundation and then, you know, work with the auditors to make the payments, you know, through both of those departments. So essentially I'm coming here, I believe, to ask your permission to accept the donations and to kind of improve the process of getting the money taken care of.
And then you're okay with Alex and get all of these out of work now?
Yeah, well initially what I did, I set up an email chain between Sarah and Kelly Kinney at the community foundation because they're the ones actually going to navigate all this. I'm just going to be the one passing the checks back and forth. So, um, yeah, I was just asked to come here and present this case to you. I guess I'm seeking approval. I'm not really sure.
If I can help, Alex has the information and basically today it is September 7th before the finish of the map if he can proceed through the project. And so I guess part of this would be per Alex's direction from that point forward, which is to make sure that it can get that.
Okay, yeah. No, I appreciate that. I think we're just trying to deal with the money now. The project won't start till the springtime, but get everything in row. So thank you for your time. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay, we want to make an ordinance to make the intersection of County Road 550 East, Brush Creek Road, and North Street a three-way yield. It's in Butlerville.
I have a bit opening for everybody here, especially since we're on Skelton Crew. We're gonna open the bids and Alex, you're referring. And if you want to see the group of bids at your bids as soon as we're done opening, you guys can go in the back room. Sherry put them over. The little board does bid, which is next to me. I have asphalt material.
We want to take the bar for second. Unmatureed.
Should be good.
Good. Good. I have Metal Talberts Incorporated.
And I have E3 Bridge.
It's from Sillicone.
This is for Stone and Sand. I have IMI.
I have US Aggregates. This one's Hottleberg.
My first one was IMI and it's from a Columbus plant. They have two different bids. They have a Brownstown plant, so now I'm gonna open IMI Brownstown. And for, we only have one bid for fuel and it's from Premier Energy. Like I said, anybody that's here for the bids, if you want to go back with Sherry, there's a room back in the auditor's office. You guys can go back in and let your individual groups and go from there. We appreciate all the bids. So Charlie, we need a motion to accept all those bids.
I'll make a motion to accept the bids.
Second of all in favor of accepting the bids. Next up, Murray.
So a couple of months ago, you had signed in, actually it's August 7th, 2025, we had signed approved our new I work agreement because we had to add storage. The city of North Vernon is doing a fire inspection package and that amount is thirty-seven fifty. They use our software as well and so it's gonna be added to our software package. They are paying for it. It will be ran through us, so we'll write a check and then they reimburse us. And then they also pay us partly for the software package too. So I have a new, it's the same contract.
We just have to have a new agreement.
Yeah, and Alex in the back of your packet, he looked at it and then has approved it. So it's just an updated add that software package that they're gonna pay for.
Okay, I'll make a motion to sign the change.
I'll second it. All in favor of... Thanks, Murray. Nikki, you're up.
In your package, you should have a travel request to the probation department is to attend a conference the first part of February. There's a letter that they have written as well. I'll read that. It says, "Two commissioners, probation officers from the J C Circuit probation department will be traveling to sixty-nine thirty in St. Paul or Indianapolis, Indiana for criminal profiling training on February fourth, on eighth of four. Well, this trip will normally not necessitate overnight accommodation. We are requesting approval to stay at the training site on the night of February third for the following reasons. The training is nearly ninety miles one way and starts at eight AM. We would need to allot approximately two and a half hours of travel time due to rush hour traffic, the need to find adequate parking and in order to arrive early enough to secure registration and seating. And most importantly, weather's a potential factor for that February date." And they ask that you please note that the cost of the training as well as accommodations and any other expenses are not being paid directly, are being paid directly for break installation duties at no cost to the county. So that is for three of them to attend that conference and spend the night and night and four.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor of approving travel request?
I can date it. That's all I have.
Thanks. Next up, Tina Bryson.
And I think Alex has priorly talked to you. He's looked at the...
Yeah, we've talked with him.
So the tax sale certificate, I wanted to put on record that three hundred and sixty-two properties, two hundred and eighty are in federal square. So this is the volume of mail that I get returned to my addresses. But I'd like to set the minimum bid at three hundred and fifty dollars.
The minimum?
Yes. And probably won't cover the taxes or any leads that we have on the property. So I'd like to look at those individually and...
I was gonna say, we definitely need to look through those. Anything that the county has a lien, we've, we've had issues with that before. I don't want to turn that list in without, you know, somebody really looking through it.
It's not under five or six, seven thousand dollars.
And just to clarify for the people, this is a sale that, these homes didn't sell like on a normal tax sale, correct?
That's correct. A lot of them have been on the sale of six hundred, two or more. So we gotta get them back on the tax bill. So I need to get the resolution signed so I can proceed with the tax sale.
Yeah, Alex said he's good with that resolution. He's already looked at it.
I'll make a motion to sign the resolution.
I'll second it. All in favor of signing the resolution.
And I have the tax sale service agreement for SIR. It needs to be signed also.
Need, need a motion for that?
Yeah, we'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to sign that.
I'll second it. All in favor of signing.
Okay, when you're done, you can hand it through Sarah and she can take care of it.
Yep, this one you're...
Yeah, it should be in your package. This sale was scheduled for the twelfth of February, was it?
Twelfth of February. Is that all you got, Tina?
This is two more.
I have seven. Let me go sign it. I heard Matt signed it. Has anybody in the crowd got anything before we move on?
Yeah.
Go ahead and you can come up.
Good morning. My name is Dylan and I'm here as representative of the Indiana Climbers Coalition, joined by my fellow board members, Paul and Henry. And I'd like to discuss the issue of climbing in Muscatetuck Park and some confusion in our community and surrounding. We've had a good relationship in the past with the park, especially prior to the closure of climbing in Muscatetuck Park. And we'd really like to continue that strong relationship and support Jennings County no matter where we land on climbing the park or whether to keep it closed. It is a rare resource in Indiana to have climbing and it's one that has not been easily replaced. I've been in search for years now since the closure to find a suitable replacement for a home for climbing in Indiana, and it simply doesn't exist. And then many tourists out of state to places like Ohio or Kentucky to enjoy climbing. So there's recently been some confusion surrounding climbing in the park as when the closure was instantiated, there was a sign that was displayed on stairwell down and that sign is no longer present as well as some clear indications on the website that climbing had been suspended. So what I, we've observed recently is some members of our community are continuing or resuming to climb there. They're under the impression that climbing is allowed in the park again because of the lack of the sign and the change of the website making that closure less prevalent. So I wanted to speak with y'all and ask about the current sentiments regarding climbing in Muscatetuck Park.
Right now, we've had no changes. I'm not, those signs, I'm not, do you guys, Seth or anybody said anything about that at all? Yeah, we'll have to check into that. I've, I'm not aware of those signs being taken down. They should not have been. Our insurance company, I mean, it wasn't that we was against climbing. The insurance company is, you know, it's pretty much, there's no way we can allow it with where we're at with insurance at this time. So I mean, it's, that was really the only, you know, it was really a decision was made because of insurance and, and if somebody would fall and get hurt there, our county would be in real trouble.
Sure. I understand the need for insurance and that's something that I believe we can help with if y'all are interested in opening those discussions. We are backed by a national organization called the Access Fund and they have opened climbing areas and helped with insurance across the country. And we would be happy to help arrange some supplemental insurance if that would help the case for reopening climbing in the park.
Yeah, I don't know. That would be an insurance discussion. I, you'd have to get with Nikki and find out through there. But, you know, as of right now, we're, we're not interested in opening anything up as long as the insurance stands where they do.
Okay, I would like to speak with Nikki and see if there's anything that we can arrange or at least open the discussion and see what opportunities are out there because we are eager to get this back. Like I said, it's something that our state simply doesn't have anymore. Prior to the closure, it was the only place you could legally climb in Indiana and that's largely still true. There's been no replacement. And I think it would really benefit Jennings County to have tourists come in and bring their dollars to your city. And we would obviously like to support them doing so legally because we have not been climbing in the park and we don't advise people to do that. But we'd really like to make this our climbing home once again.
Yeah, like I said, you can get in contact with her and, and, you know, I don't know where to lead, but that's, that's where you'd have to start.
There's no public place in Indiana that allows climbing?
There is the Hoosier National Forest that allows climbing, but it is not established well. And it is nothing that could replace Muscatetuck, especially when it comes to history. For all climbers are really keen on the history of an area. With Muscatetuck being opened back in the nineties when the first climbs were done, there's nothing like that, especially on public land. There's some private climbing, but it's much more difficult to get access there and people have their own concerns of liability.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it comes down to is liability these days, unfortunately.
No, absolutely. So I'd be happy to discuss this with Nikki, but we'd also like to offer to donate a sign to be placed back in the park because we're not sure, like you said, I, I don't suspect you all took it down. But we would like our community to be well-informed and at least us be able to be certain that climbing is still no longer allowed.
Yeah, like I said, we'll do some checking on that, but whenever you contact Nikki, you can, we'll, we'll figure that sign thing out.
Sure. And which one of you, Nikki, would you like to add? I'd love to speak with you after the meeting to exchange some contact information. Great. Well, thank you all for your time. We appreciate it.
Yep, thank you for coming. Anybody else got anything? Randy? Let's move on to the board and stuff then. I need a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Make a motion.
I'll second it. All in favor of approving the minutes. Need a motion to sign payroll and claims.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. All in favor of signing payroll and claims. We'll charge Matt though. We'll sign those.
I'm not responsible for those today. Thank you.
Hey Randy, I get a lot of questions here lately. People's getting tons of phone calls, emails, text messages, trying to buy their land. Do they get that information from GIS? Is that where they're coming up with, where they getting all that information?
The only thing they can get from GIS is the address. They can't get the ones that are...
Hey, how would they be getting? I just don't understand how they're tying it to our properties. I mean, I'm getting like six to ten a week myself.
You go to, there's different websites that'll show up a phone number.
That's where they'd be getting them.
Any phone numbers we can have in my office if you're willing to go online.
I'm just curious, this, I mean, it's kind of getting ridiculous.
Yeah.
I didn't know if there was a way to stop it or we just gotta deal with it. What worries me, they send that mail out, some older person just look at it and sign that purchase agreement. See a little bit of money there and think, well, I'll do that.
And I'm sure you've seen commercials about people who try to, probably, we have terrific people who probably come and they're probably selling by the way they package.
Right.
We have someone who saved our place, has to be a creative officer, to be finalized. And it will be really hard.
For that to happen. I've had that question too. I wasn't sure how that would work either.
But if, and if people do have concerns about that, we have an hour of soft resistance. We can go in and put an O and as soon as somebody pulls out their passport, no problem. They can like scam, call the owners, whatever they want to do. We put that on.
All right, we'll just go ahead and throw that on the line. I just, if everybody worked hard, being a good worker, instead of a scammer, we'd be all right. Amy, do these need signing? Speaking of the devil, right there is one of them running down. I don't understand it. Guess if I don't sign this one, you won't get paid. These ones that's got our names, where do you sign those at? There's one on each one of those.
Yep, that's maintenance and you've got the maintenance.
Yeah, I already did those. Yeah, I guess, really, we'll wait till Matt is here. I know how I'm going to vote, so. I know how he's going to vote. I know how he's going to vote.
The adjustments were made on the commissioner meetings because I have one scheduled for.
This is just.
During fall break, so I moved that to right before fall break, like we had to do this year. That's the only thing that we, well, in the April, the April meetings, Alex said we could go ahead and put them.
Did you check with the schools yet to see?
That's, Alex said it. Yeah.
That's in there?
Spring break, fall break, everything should, nothing should conflict with that schedule.
So you just need a motion to approve the minutes or the meetings?
Do you want to do the holidays too and it'll be done?
It's fine. We have that.
Do you have the holidays?
It's behind that one. Oh, I didn't pull.
Oh, it's up there.
Yeah, there it is.
Have you spoke with Matt about?
You've already got it taken out of here.
It was taken out.
Do you want a motion for both or several?
We probably need to say we're going to take it out and we're going to do that so everybody knows. We've had discussion about the Juneteenth holiday and when we put that in effect, I don't even remember what year we done it now. We thought it was going to be a state holiday and it is not, and we've had a lot of conversation about it and I'm going to recommend that we take it out of our holiday schedule. It's kind of where I'm leaning towards. So if you agree with that, we'll need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to take out the Juneteenth holiday.
And approve this.
And approve the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-six.
I'll second. All those in favor? Is there anything else we got?
We have a lot of people anxious to get that, so I'll be happy.
That's what I didn't want to wait till next meeting because I know there's people needing it. Anybody else got anything? Good question. We'll do that first meeting in January. Sarah, speak on that. Can you get us a list of all our appointments because we've got a few we need to change? Get each commissioner a copy of that. And.
And you want that on for January?
Yeah, we, we'd like that list by next meeting. That way we got time to go over it because I know there's a few that I need to change. Does anybody know of any appointments that's in here that's not wanting to be other than the one I know you know? All righty, if nobody has anything else, I'll hand a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. All those in favor?